This is the Department of Energy's public meeting on Waste Isolation Pilot Plan. And the purpose of the meeting is really twofold. The first is to share updated information that we have on the recent incidents at the Waste Isolation Pilot Plan. And the second is to get your input, to answer your questions and hear your concerns about those incidents. Before we get started and get too far down the road, I want to introduce Carlsbad Mayor Dale Janeway. Mayor Janeway wanted to talk and make some introductory remarks.
Well, thank you very much. My name is Dale Janeway. I'm speaking here as a lifelong citizen of Carlsbad and as mayor. We were all extremely thankful to learn earlier this week that the follow-up tests to 13 workers at WIP have come up negative. Carlsbad and the citizens of Southeast New Mexico are and always will be the primary stakeholders when it comes to the Waste Isolation Pilot Plan. Well, thank you very much for holding this meeting today to make sure our citizens have the opportunity to ask questions and make statements. We're here to keep this high level of public contact throughout the resolution of this incident at WIP and beyond that into the future. For that reason, I want to have a town hall meeting on a weekly basis to make sure the public is completely informed about plans for re-entry, mitigation of any contamination of the mine, and leading to get back operations quickly. I want to emphasize that I very strongly support WIP, its mission, and above all, the man and women who work there. We have four speakers lined up this evening. There are David Claus, Deputy Under-Secretary for Management and Performance; David Hizenga, Senior Advisor for the DOE's Office of Environmental Management; Joe Franco, CBFO Manager; and Fran Williams, URS Technical Advisor. The good news about this is that many of WIP's systems seem to have worked very well, systems such as the continuous air monitors, filtration system, and independence of Carlsbad, environmental monitoring and research. All have worked extremely well. Beyond that, I encourage a prompt and efficient investigation. The longer it takes to get to the bottom of this incident, the more damaging it is to Carlsbad in this project. Of course, safety and communication are absolutely the two topmost important issues right now, as they should always be. Thank you for coming down to speak to us today, and thank you to everyone gathered here this evening to keep in form. Thank you very much.
You did such a good job and cut my introduction in half. There are some other officials here in our audience that I'd like to introduce and thank for coming. House Mayor Sam Cobb; Loving Mayor Pete Estrada; we have city council members here from Carlsbad; State Senator Carol Lavelle; and we also have the congressional staff members here: Diana Ventura from Senator Heinrich's office; Barbara Romero from Congressman Pierce's office; and Beverly Allen from Senator Udall's office, who would like to make a quick statement. Beverly?
And thank you for coming tonight. I appreciate it. And Kathy, Senator Tom Udall, and they're allowing me to just read a couple of comments. We were going to be part of the Friday event, and there was a snow day in DC, and so they had some work to get done. And so Senator Heinrich and Udall were unable to come on Friday. So we were going to include EPA in this DOE meeting, but I think it's important to -- well, you have EPA here tonight, but we wanted to show, you know, one more layer of the federal presence. And so when this all started, Senator Udall and Heinrich wrote a letter to EPA. I printed a whole bunch of copies, and I'm going to leave them here on the front. There was also press releases out last night. But I think it's really important to -- Senator Udall, they write a comment about it just to kind of help everybody understand some of the results and response from the EPA. Senator Udall wrote, "The health and safety of the Carlsbad community and WIP personnel is of the utmost importance. So I want to thank Administrator McCarthy and Major Administrator Curry for their timely response to our letter. EPA regulates WIP and is providing independent information. It's a release that EPA test results are similar to those of SEAMER and the Department of Energy, which show levels well below anything that would cause a public health concern. EPA has assured us that officials are continuing their independent monitoring and that a full analysis is pending. Many people in the community have expressed concern and interest in further study of the health and safety impacts from the accident at WIP. So I look forward to further information for the same reason. I'm continuing to encourage EPA to send additional resources to WIP to help ensure the most timely and accurate information is available to the community." And so I've got those down here, and then also, just to let you know that the delegation, Senator Udall, Senator Heinrich, and Colonel Inspector Pierce just left a meeting with Secretary Moniz where they discussed those press releases that's going to be out from the delegation. But they had, I think, a really good meeting with him to let him know, you know, how important WIP is and the safety of our staff. I'm sure he's been filling you guys in more about that, but just so you know that Secretary Moniz has been involved with us. And if I can help you in any way, let us know, and thank you for coming tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Beverly. Just a brief overview of the agenda tonight, and the mayor told you about most of our presenters. Farouk Sharif, who is the President of Nuclear Waste Partnerships, will also be on our agenda tonight, so you'll be hearing from him as well. I wanted to let you know that after we go through the speakers, there will be time for questions and concerns to be raised, and we'll ask all of you to come to one of these microphones in front and make your comments and ask your questions. So with that, without further ado, I would like to introduce David Claus, who is the Deputy Under-Secretary for Management and Performance.
Thank you, Brad. I know that a lot of you want to know about sort of more the details of what happened, so I'm going to not make my remarks long. But let me share with you first, on behalf of Secretary Moniz, I want to thank you all for coming, and I want to thank everybody from the community who's voiced their support for the WIP program over the years. I want to thank the workers, both from the federal staff and from URS and from the WIP site, who've been working hard over the last three weeks to really get on top of all of the information, to make sure that we do all the tests that came in on the workers who had exposures, to make sure that we get the monitoring data to have this known firmly and for sure exactly what happened, or at least to know and have a good sense of the extent to which there may have been any danger to the community. What I am pleased is, and I can tell you, that the safety of the workforce and the community has been the top priority for the secretary and for the department throughout all of this. We started talking with the communications secretary, who's known about this, and we've been keeping him informed on a regular basis. He gets a memo every night, giving him an update on the status of WIP. We've had a couple meetings, at least several hours at different times, talking about what we're doing with WIP, what the status is, how we're taking care of the community, and how we're taking care of the workforce. And Dave Hizenga and I, Joe and others, spent the time at the site this morning and spoke to the secretary afterwards, giving him his report, so that he had the opportunity, when he met with Senators Udall and Heinrich, to really be informed and to get our views, so that he could share with them what we saw when we were there. Today, I'll tell you that there was one thing today in my visit to the site that surprised me, and it's when people came up and they said, "Well, is the department going to continue with WIP or are you going to reopen it?" And it was, I got to tell you, it surprised me because the entire time that we've been working on this issue from the perspective of the DOE headquarters, that question has not come up a single time. The question has not been if we're going to open WIP, if we reopen WIP, it's been how can we get it reopened? How can we provide Joe and WIP and the local, and the people who are working on this issue, the resources that they need? How can we work with URS and help them get the direction and the effective monitor and the effective assistance that they need? It just surprised me that people out here would ask a question, because that's exactly the opposite of the way we've been thinking. And as you know, there's -- the WIP is absolutely -- WIP is absolutely essential to the language we, in which the department and frankly this country see that we will deal with for 50 years of waste that were produced by the Cold War, in the course of the challenges of the Cold War. We have, as you know, there's waste that's been coming to the site recently from Idaho, it's been coming from Los Alamos, it's been coming from the Seabed River. Right now, we see our challenge is, how do we deal with that on an annual basis, so that we get WIP back open and become the site that we've become, the wonderful repository that it's been for 15 years, and get it back in operation? And when we think about the challenges for the future, we think not about, you know, we think, you know, you're not alone here in Carlsbad and thinking about what are the other missions that can be achieved with WIP. And I think we think about it in terms of the challenges, that, boy, how can we learn from this? In a way, how can we learn from, how can we learn about whether we can accept waste in a different form? Can we change our ventilation systems? Can we do different things, but that, granted, if this ever happens or whatever happened, once we learn what happened, that we can make WIP even safer than we believe it is? So I think others will share with you where we are in terms of putting together recovery plans. They'll talk to you about what's going to happen with the workforce. And I know fantasy here can answer questions about sort of the health effects, he's an expert in that regard. So I'd like to conclude, but I think the tradition here is that you introduce lots of people. And in that great tradition, I'd like to introduce and thank Brian Flynn from the state of New Mexico for coming and joining us, the Secretary of the New Mexico Environmental Department. Tom Peet, EPA's Director of the Center for Waste Management is here. I'd like to thank him for coming. We really do appreciate their expertise, and frankly, when we get an independent view that corroborates yours, it's really, really helpful. And we thank them for their dependence and for the support and efforts that they made. I also want to thank Dr. Russell Hardy, who, from the Carlsbad Environmental Monitoring and Research Center, who also provides independent, an independent assessment as to what's going on, and there's nothing that's more helpful than that. And then also, I'd like to thank James Taylor, who is the URS General Manager. He's one of the most senior people in the company, and he's been here today with us. And in addition to reflecting, I think, I think it reflects the commitment that his company has to this project. And I want to thank him and his senior management team for being with here, remaining here with us tonight. And with that, I get the last introduction. We hand it over to David Hizenga, who's the Senior Advisor for Environmental Management.
Thanks, David. Joe and David and others are making our talk easier, because there's going to be less and less to cover, because they're doing a good job of filling the details. But I just would like to echo what David said. The support for WIP is just as strong as it's ever been. We're going to take this as an opportunity to work with the contractor pulling in resources from around the DOE complex, both federal and contractor resources, to understand what happened, make sure that we have learned a lesson from it. Thank goodness nothing really has happened that, from a health and safety standpoint, and we're pleased in that regard. But we want to use this as an opportunity to make WIP even stronger in the future. So we are completely committed to getting back in business and being in business for a very long time. WIP is a key element of my overall responsibilities, to clean up the Antrim sites, the Seabrooks site, Idaho, and the Los Alamos, to mention a few. And obviously, WIP is the key to overall opportunity and success of our environmental management program nationwide. I would like to also thank the URS folks for bringing in extra resources. They see the importance of bringing in people that have expertise of other decontamination and de-emission activities around the complex. So bringing those experts in, coordinating then with Joe and his people, and with the folks here that have mining expertise, we can marry those two things together, and doing so, we'll have the strongest team, the team that we need to be successful. Mayor Janeway, I appreciate your comments and other local officials. I appreciate you guys have been supportive, the community has been supportive from the very, very beginning, and we appreciate that and we respect that, and we're going to stand behind you together as a team. We're going to get through this, and we're going to, you know, chart our future together. So we appreciate that. I think I'll turn it over to Joe, and then just most importantly, we really want to hear from you at some point today, to make sure that if there's something we're missing and we're not doing, then now's your opportunity to give us a hint and tell us what you need from us. So please be open. Thank you.
I'd like to say thanks to David for coming. David and Dave both are my boss and my boss's boss, so it's good to have them here, showing the support that we need. It is important for the team that we have out at the facility to see the support that we have back in Washington, DC. I also want to thank everyone else that's here tonight, so you can get some of the information that we currently have, and we want to make sure that we have covered any questions you have from the both of the events. You know, we had the fire, and then we had the radiological event. I want to say first, the Department of Energy and Nuclear Waste Partnership, which are now operating their own facility, are doing everything to recover from these events. We want to make sure we keep everyone updated, and to say communicate these events, remember happening again. So we want to make sure that we do our due diligence and make sure that we go and see what actually causes this event. As a nation watches us as we start to make our progress in this, the only federal repository for transuranic nuclear waste in this country, and I would say the world, it is essential that we restore as soon as possible. We know that we provide a big service to the nation, but I also want to make very clear that we will not jeopardize the safety of our workers, the employees out there, and the public, and our environment. You know, I'm a homegrown Carlsbad, and I have family here also, and if I didn't feel that we were doing things safe, I'd stop. I have a lot of friends out at the facility, and I also, you know, have a strong bond with them, and want to make sure that we're doing everything right. That's why we have initiated a lot of support from the rest of the complex, so we want to make sure we have the experts, we have expertise within our own organization here, and we're going to continue to follow up on making sure we're doing everything right. To that, and last night, we announced that the additional sample results from the 13 workers that were initially identified as having some exposure, that their samples came back negative for urine sample. Today, we received notification, we had sent those samples off to get evaluated also by the Centers for Disease Control, to make sure that, you know, it's a validation of our data, and that came out the same at the working detectable level. So we're very proud of that. Next is a recovery effort. You know, we're going to be working on a recovery effort as we send some equipment in the underground. We'll be getting into more detail of that. I don't need to get into the details until we get some questions from you, so you can get into some specifics there. Also, communications, as the mayor requested, we are also planning to go ahead, and we want to do that. We want to have these conferences weekly. There's one person there, we're going to talk to that one person, but we want to have them regularly, that way folks can plan them, and then they can come and visit with us. DOE recognizes the importance of timely and transparent information. We've also are looking at, you know, we had set up a website with a page up there, and so we post our information there, so if you don't have that website after the meeting, you know, we can provide that to you. As we proceed through the recovery process, I want everyone to know, all activities we perform safety in accordance with established procedures and protocols. We don't know exactly what happened down in there until we get down there and actually physically see what happened, you know, that's when the actual recovery plan for the actual waste, where we will actually manage and take care of the waste issue there, we'll develop those plans at that time. What I know is that our workforce, and you went to talking with them today, it's been a while since I've been back out there talking to them, it just really energized me, hearing their spirit of still the care and the pride they have on the facility. It, I'm proud to be back and be the manager. I think I'm here for a reason. I'm glad that I am the manager right now, and I hope the workforce believes in me to carry this forward. Finally, we are working with NWP on a workforce plan. We want to make sure that we have that covered. I've been working with Farouk and his team, and I think we have a really good path forward. Now, I would like to introduce Farouk Sharif. What do you know?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Joe. Thank you all for being here. I also want to start by thanking both David Claus and also David Hizenga for taking the time to show up at our site today. I know they want to be here, but they took the time to talk to some of our employees. You know, all of our employees are really concerned about their jobs, and there's a lot of rumors out there, and, you know, they heard it from the horse's mouth. Okay, the commitment from the Department of Energy is absolutely as high as ever. We want to recover the facility, and we want to put everybody back to what we do best. So that was very, very timely, and we appreciate what you did today. Thank you very much. You know, I'm also extremely pleased, you know, about the negative results that we have received of our 13 employees. You know, our health and welfare of our employees are very, very important to all of us, and that is my job, to make sure that we protect and make sure that our employees are safe. You know, we still have a lot of work to do. You know, we continue to perform other bio-USA samples on our employees, and we will continue until we are satisfied that we have monitored anyone who has the potential for internal contamination. We will also check anyone who requests monitoring for reassurance, and get all of their questions answered in a very timely manner. In fact, we're also assigning employee health caducus to ensure that all concerns from all employees are addressed. We're working very closely with our warning unit, the unit of the workers, and our security union, and also with all of our employees, to make sure that any concerns that they have, they're brought to me closely, and we will deal with any of those concerns, and we'll make sure that all answer the questions that I answer. Now let's talk real quickly about our recovery process. You know, the objective is to return the facility to safe, compliant, transuranic operations. The process began with stabilizing the above-ground ventilation system. This work will continue through this weekend. Next, we will deploy radiological and industrial hygiene instruments underground to determine the conditions of the air that's there, which paves the way for manned entries. Now, these personnel will perform shaft inspections for both the sock and air intake shaft. They will also take and check for contamination between the two shafts, the air intake shaft and the sock shaft, so that we have two easy rest points. The team will establish a safe working area, and then begin making their way to panel six and seven. Panel seven is our active waste panel, and panel six, we are in the process of actually sealing that panel up. The team will identify the source of the contamination, and a plan to mitigate the source will be developed and implemented. We will not rush through this process. You know, I take the safety of our employees very seriously. I have worked on the site for 24 years, so I pretty much grew up here. I also know all the employees, and I'm proud of all the things that they have accomplished. And we have accomplished a lot over the last 15 years of operations. Nuclear Waste Partnership will develop a workforce plan that supports the overall recovery process through the end of this fiscal year. Our plan is to utilize existing WIP workforce supplemented by expertise that we bring from our operation. So I really wanted to tell you how much I appreciate all of your support through this process. I'd like to introduce now Fran Williams. She is the Vice President of Environmental Safety, Health, and Quality Assurance at UCOR in the Tennessee, in Tennessee Project. She serves as my advisor during this recovery process. She has 37 years of experience in plutonium and americium environments, the Seabed River, Idaho, and Angel Apps, Sella Field, which is a location up in the UK, and now she is over in Tennessee. She, I can't believe that she's got 37 years of experience, because she doesn't look like she's 37, but famous. So Fran, please come on up here.
I really appreciate the opportunity to talk with you tonight. I'm beginning to like it less and less when they tell you how many years of experience I have, but I do have 37 years of experience. And if I were you, I would be asking the question, what does this event, what impact does it have on me? What impact does it have on my family if I lived or were in the vicinity of WIP? And that's the question I'm going to try to answer for you tonight. The initial event mostly remained in the mine and within the filters that protect the mine. That system functioned as intended. So greater than 99% of the activity released stayed in the mine or in the filters. Less than 1% was released to the environment, and most of that stayed on WIP site. The levels the next day dropped significantly, so that what we could read on our instruments and read on our filters was background. Those WIP measurements have been confirmed by SEAMER, Carlsbad Environmental Monitoring and Research Center at New Mexico State University. The state of New Mexico has also deployed monitoring equipment, and we look forward to their results, in the intent that they will confirm our measurements as well. You heard that from Beverly, that the EPA was requested by Senators Udall and Heinrich to perform some independent monitoring as well. The EPA responded to that request, and I'd like to read just a portion of it, that said "The initial field measurements combined with the modeling of potential public exposures indicate that it is very unlikely that any exposures would approach regulatory limits or represent a public health concern." End of quote. So I'm going to try to put the unit of measurement for radiation exposure in perspective. It's called a milligram, and it's nothing more than a unit of exposure. So the member of the general public that lives in the United States from natural background radiation receives 310 milligram, or 310 units of that dose every year. There's an additional 310 units of dose that you receive from medical tests on average and from household consumer products, for a total of 620 milligram, or units of exposure. The Department of Energy has a limit for members of the general public that each year can receive no more than 100 milligram from their operations. A chest X-ray is about 10 milligram, and if you flew from Los Angeles to New York round trip, it's a little bit less than 4 milligram. So that just gives you a context of dose. So that just gives you a context of dose unless you see what I'm going to talk about next and how it affects you. We have 7 air monitors at WIP that are outside the plant boundary. We read the activity on those filter papers, and the one that had the most activity was just slightly above background. So if you had stayed at that monitoring station and you had breathed all of that material, your dose calculated, and this is an estimate because it's not final, would have been 3 milligram, less than the flight from Los Angeles to New York round trip, just above background. And to members of the general public, you live further away from that. That station is about half a mile off of the WIP site. So your dose would be negligible. It would be much less than that. So the message that I am trying to convey is that there are no health impacts to you, your family, the members of your community from this event. The air that we are breathing tonight contains no more radioactivity in it than it did the day before the event. They mentioned the WIP website. There is also a number, a 1-800 number that you can call to get your questions answered. It's 1-800-336-9477. The last thing I want to talk to you about is the exposure to the WIP employees. You've heard everyone say that the health and safety of our employees is the most important priority. It is a value for our corporation. So we also were concerned, and we took a risk-based approach and monitored those employees who had any potential for exposure first. Those were the first samples that were read, and that's the 13 that you heard about. And the initial samples were slightly positive, just above the minimum detection limit that we can see. The second samples and the third samples for those 13 employees came back negative. And what that means for them, and by the way, you've also heard it was confirmed by the CDC, and we think that's very important. The Centers for Disease Control confirmed that the second and third samples were negative. Those workers have been told that as a result of this exposure, that they will receive over, if they live 50 years, over that 50-year period, roughly 10 milligram or 10 units of exposure from this event. So you compare that to a chest X-ray, you compare it to the flight, and, and I would say that sitting in this meeting for as long as we have, we have received about the same amount of exposure from natural background. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. We are continuing to monitor employees, and as we receive those test results, they will be communicated. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you all very much. At this time, we'd like to open it up for questions. Before we go, I want to introduce Susan Scott. Susan will be recording your questions and your concerns. We're going to use that as a baseline for our future communications. So that's what Susan will be doing up here. If you'd like to come up to any of these microphones and ask us questions or make comments, now's the time. And please introduce yourself when you come up.
My name is Larry. For the next step, question about biological testing. It's been very vague in the media. Tonight, it was said that urine test was referred to as that, what's been done, and there've been other things. And what accounts for the urine testing results?
Thank you for that question that I adapted there. We have been doing some other exams, and now let Fran answer that.
Biological monitoring for potential radiation exposure really consists of three methods. The first one that we take if we suspect an exposure is a fecal sample, stool sample. And we take that because if there is any material that is ingested, it moves through your digestive tract very quickly, and we can detect very low levels in your, in your feces. That was the first sample, and that was the one that showed slightly positive. We follow that with urine samples. If you inhale this material into your lungs, it stays in your lungs, and some of it moves, and it moves into your bloodstream, and it is eliminated through the kidneys, bladder, and the urine. Those are the second and third set samples. We also have a method available to us for this type of material where we can put two detectors over your chest, and we can measure the energy from the material through your chest wall. And that's called a lung count. So we've also done lung counts. We, we tailor all of those methodologies to the intake. And once we get a negative result in the urine, it's determined that the intake is low or so low it can't be measured or not, nonexistent. So we started with the fecal samples. We moved to urine. We also did chest sample. Does that answer your question?
Pretty much so. The test that showed completely negative is different from the test that shows some positivity.
The methodology of the analysis is very similar. But one is to show material that might be in the digestive tract that's moved through, and one is to show material that might be in the lung. So they, they're biological testing, but they're for a little bit of a different purpose. If you have material in your lung, you know how you have mucus, and you cough, and some of that material in your lung is in that mucus, and you'll swallow it, and we'll see it in your feces. So we use both. We use both to determine the quantity material. We're going to use every testing method available to us to determine.
Other questions?
So the, the negative in the urine recently doesn't mean that the earlier test was not valid. I mean, it showed some minor understanding exposure.
That's correct. That's correct. And that, that amount of material in the fecal sample is what led me to say that we have estimated their exposure at roughly 10 units, 10 milligram.
Come on up, sir.
I'm Al Manaral, and I sort of have a two-part question. One, is there any concern that the release resulted from the fire that they had a couple of days earlier? And the second part is, what kind of problems do you anticipate has occurred as a result of the fire?
Thanks for your question. And on the fire, we actually have done some analysis on the fire, on the filters that we had formed stationed over that exit from the mine. And we did not see any correlation of that from the fire. Totally different. The distance from where the fire occurred to where the panel area is, is about 3,000 feet. And it's different drifts, and as you go down in, different volcanoes that have to go through. So we didn't see any correlation to that. The other question on the, I'm sure, what was that? Sorry, can you ask the, oh, here. And the problems resulted from our, as we move forward with the recovery from the radiological side, we, you know, we're still, we were actually in the phase of recovery from the fire where we're doing, working through the investigation. So as we get done through the recovery of the radiological event, we will go in and make sure that we have done all the corrective actions and finish the closure piece for the evaluation of the fire. Okay?
Other questions? Don't be shy. Come on in.
I don't have a question, I have a comment here generally. Good to see you this evening. I'm Sam Cobb, Mayor of Hobbs. I came here this evening to gain some assurances on behalf of our residents as to the safety of course of the workers. Some of them are from the Hobbs area as well. And also, and I was assured this evening, and I want to applaud your intent, your methodology, and the scientific basis of what you're doing this. We have, in our community, we realize the importance of WIP to the region and to the nation. All of, all of us here in Southeast New Mexico, we are all brothers and sisters. So we, we know how important this project is to the region, how important it is to this community. And you have our wholehearted support. We look forward to you getting back in business and providing valuable services to this nation that you provide. And we wish you the best, and anything that we can do on behalf of our community, we extend our services to.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ryan Flynn, Secretary of the Environment Department. I just had a couple of comments. One, I wanted to, first of all, thank you for holding the town hall. We were, wasn't, I didn't hide that we were a little frustrated with the initial exchange of information. But on behalf of the state, we do appreciate the improved communication that we've been receiving from the Department of Energy. We're having daily briefings. And I'm, I'm very grateful for the dramatic increase in the level of communication that we've been having. So I want to recognize that and acknowledge that we appreciate the effort. I want to acknowledge the work of Dr. Hardy and CEMER. They've been really outstanding partners in this. And I want also, in a same way, to thank them for all of their outstanding work. And I think until this evening, I mean, for answering, I think Dr. Hardy himself had done an outstanding job of being able to present information in a manner that was digestible to the public. So we really do appreciate, and I want to acknowledge CEMER's outstanding role in this as well. My comments, most importantly, you know, Mayor Generali is absolutely right. There should be weekly town, town hall meetings. So I agree that this isn't, I, I, I state fully supports that suggestion. The community, I don't have enough fingers and toes to account the amount of people that take credit for the success of the WIP. And there are certainly a lot of different people who were responsible for, for this facility being located here and for it being successful. But the, the number one reason that this facility has been a success is because of problems that, period. And I think that you must continue to engage the community. This is a sophisticated community. It's a resilient community, and they are your number one stakeholder here. And so I do, full-heartedly, it's, I'm very, I'm feeling that we've improved our communication between the state and DOE. And I would encourage you to continue to reach out to the community. And you have to include Carlsbad in this discussion on, not, not even on a weekly basis, on a daily basis. And we must continue to provide them information because they are, they are the reason this has been a success, and they are the only reason this will continue to be a success. So I want to make that very, very clear. And lastly, you know, to that point, while we really appreciate you all coming from DC and other places to brief the public, and I recognize that I do appreciate that Senator Secretary Moniz was briefing our congressional delegation in DC. I would like to see Secretary Moniz out here in Carlsbad. This facility is we believe this facility is critical to the complex. And I believe that DOE, based on the conversations I have that you agree, and based on your statements tonight, that you agree. And so I know our creations have acquired. And I know that Secretary Moniz is a very busy man. And, you know, not only a state secretary, but within a couple of minutes of me finding out that this had occurred, I was down in Carlsbad that night. I was in a car driving down here at, you know, 8:30 in the evening, getting down here one in the morning to be here to talk to the public the next day. And so I really want to see Secretary Moniz out here. I know the governor's delivered that message already. And I just wanted to reiterate that this community is the reason why this has been a success. This is the reason why it will continue to be a success. And I really think it would send a powerful message that this facility is critical to DOE. The Secretary Generali's right here. So thank you for indulging.
Thank you.
Thank you for telling us.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Alloca Hasko. My job here from Roswell. I, I first found out about this incident, not through the paper, but through friends and family in Austin, Texas. I mean, they, they, of course, you can imagine the way things have kind of been blown out of proportion through a variety of venues, social media mainly. It's incredible the kinds of things that you'll discover online. So my brother's, you know, my brother happens to be a rheumatologist in Austin, Texas. He works with children, both in Austin and San Antonio. And he would be the first one to tell you that certain levels of exposure would be, I guess, perfectly normal or acceptable for adults, but completely different when it comes to children. So I guess one of my questions is, how far out are you testing? I mean, I think I heard something probably like a half mile out from the facility or whatever. But I, I haven't joined that yet because I might have probably found all this information online. But I think I said to myself, nope, we've all got to be able to make these people feel that like they're going to be held accountable somehow. Because as I was driving over here, there was a report on NPR. It just so happened, so I think there's an anniversary on the time memorial dead march, with the time dead march. And I actually took part in that competition, by the way, when it used to take part from Los Angeles. But anyway, long story short, the gentleman that they were interviewing from Washington DC who authorizes the number of those cases where they can actually exhume a body to identify it, says, you know what, no matter how successful our offices are in identifying a lot of those remains, he says, all it takes is just one to be misidentified. So, I mean, I can identify with the mayor here, the facility has brought, I guess, some fortunes to this community. But, you know, and for some of you, I don't know, some of you are, were from out of town, you just drive between Roswell, here, and what have you, you would see it. There's practically nothing out here. So I think you, I, I respect Joe Steen. I know he brought this. This is his, his pet project, or was. Now, of course, passed on. But I actually met him in Washington DC too. And I don't know, I just, I came here and I said, what do you want to say? What do I want to ask? And I'm grateful that you guys are holding this town hall meeting. Roswell, of course, didn't have to take the initiative of putting something like this together for our community. And we're only about 72 miles from here, so. But when I heard it was airborne, I was like, okay, I'm like, okay. Yeah, I think only go find out, you know, what these people have to say, and it takes some literature and practice and stuff. But anyway, that's what my main concern is, how far out am I going to test? And as nominal as the exposure seems, I mean, you can't help but wonder, as soon as I heard about this, what's going on in Japan where experts have come forward with Fukushima to some degree. It's been handed within a certain, I guess, framework such as not to alarm people. So that's, that was my main concern is just how bad, does the scene or how far out are you going to test? Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I appreciate the question. That's the main purpose for the town hall, is to get those questions answered. And I appreciate you coming from Roswell. I was just up there picking up my wife at the airport last night. So we do use Roswell quite a bit. Know where it's at. It's a great state place there too. We want to answer this. I'm going to let Fran answer that. We do have other monitors outside of the facility, and we have received samples in those. We also have that on the website, so we're trying to keep that kind of transparency, you can see. But we'll let Fran answer that.
First, I'd like to say that you and your brother are absolutely correct that we, we have lower limits of exposure for children than we do for adults. Since this release was just above background around the WIP site. Did you hear that feedback? It's getting worse. They should see no health impact, and they should have received no exposure. There are seven monitoring stations that are off of the WIP site, and we've pulled all of those filter paper samples. I only spoke to the one that was I only spoke to the one that was the highest. There's one in Carlsbad, and that one was even lower, and that one was just above background. And we will continue to monitor all seven of those sites. They ring the site, if you will. I'm not that familiar with geography, but I know that there is, is one, of the seven, they go around the site. And the one I spoke to was one that was the highest, but all the others had been measured, they're all well below any limits, just above background, and resulted in no health potential to a child or fetus.
We've also, just some information, we've received some feedback from, you know, Urinko, it's uranium processing, uh, original facility at, by, uh, Dow, our units. They, they had some questions from their employees, so they went and they pulled their sample, and they came back that they had zero detects on, of background on their samples. So, that confirmed that there was nothing towards a failure. Then, we also have the Carlsbad Environmental Monitoring Research Center that does independent sampling for us, and they, actually not for us, for the community, and they actually share that information, and they're, you know, independent, and they provide that. And so, they also have different samples that they take, including water, soil, and all of those. And if you have any question, that, that would be Dr. Hardy that provides that independent piece of. Yep, and, and, yeah, to finish that, we are also taking soil, vegetation, water samples of, around the facility and around the areas, around where we got the, I guess, and then just making sure that we continue to have a run background. Thank you. Go ahead, Mayor.
My name is Cynthia Shaker, and I'm going to be tested at CMRC, but they cannot get me into the twenty-eight, and they told me they cannot test my children. And it's very alarming to me, because we do live outside of Carlsbad, where the internet site was saying that the Tony was released, and I was wondering if there is any way I can get a reading on my children.
Dr. Hardy, please.
Sure, so if I can ask you a question. There's two reasons why we're not testing children at this time. We have asked for a variance. We set up our, our public body count system as a research project, and so, to get that covered through the Mexico State University, we had to work through the institutional review board, which governs how we set up our research project and sets parameters on what types of participants we can sample. And so, because there's a lot of, both federal and state laws against working with children, we have to limit to adults. I have asked for a waiver because of this particular instance, so we have submitted paperwork to the institutional review board for a waiver to allow us to count children. So, it would be outside of our, our normal line of account program. But the, the second thing that you need to be aware of is, our system is calibrated and set up for adults. And so, we have established a minimum detective activities for a range of people from a small framed female to a large framed male. While we will count your children, we can't give the same level of accuracy or we can't guarantee the results. So, we will, once we get the waiver from MSU, count your children, but we can't, you know, give it the good, good housekeeping sort of approval that we're a hundred percent confident in the results, because our calibration process is limited to adult body frames. And it has to do with the chest wall thickness that Ms. Williams was talking about. The, the way the tech detectors work is, it's kind of a reversing MRI. The detector actually reads the amount of radiation coming out of your body. And so, we have it calibrated, again, for a varied, a varied set of frame sizes and chest wall thicknesses. And so, because children are smaller and their chest walls are thinner, if we see activity, we may not be able to exactly quantify it to a particular level. So, we'll give you our best guess, but we, once we get that waiver, we'll make sure to give you your contact information, that I'll call you and we'll get your children in. You're welcome.
Can I just try to reach a clarification point on Fran, maybe you can help me? And I think medicines are strolling away there. I think, Cynthia, we really need to try to get at a more fundamental question that you're raising, and I'd like Fran maybe to help me or Joe relative to whether you really should be concerned at all. I mean, I appreciate that I have kids and I'm concerned about my kids, where I think there's a risk, but I think Joe was trying to explain, he and his family live here, I, I, I think there really isn't any risk to your kids. I, I'm all for getting tested and getting tested in some way to make you comfortable that, you know, that the machine is working right and will work to get it and make all that happen, I'm sure. But I think you're having a level of anxiety that frankly, I just don't think people need to have. This was such a mineu thing that was released, and I don't know where exactly you live, but if we could get clarification of that, I think we could make you feel somewhat better that, that you really just don't have an issue.
I, I think it's, it's very unnerving for folks when we talk in handis radiation and milligram, and, and you don't understand it and you're not used to it. I'm, I'm going to give an analogy, and it's not a scientific analogy, but it might help you. I would never work on thirteen point eight kilovolts of electricity, because I'm not trained and electricity kills. If you look at industrial safety accidents, driving your vehicle and electricity are two of the highest causes of death in industry and to the general public. I would never work on thirteen point eight KTBs. But I charge my iPhone every single night. I charge my iPad every single night. I touch that cord, I move that cord, I don't feel a tingle, I don't feel a shock, and if I lift that cord, it wouldn't hurt me. There are levels of radiation that will kill you, there are levels of radiation that we know will cause cancer. These levels of radiation are just above natural background at the WIP site. And so, there is no expectation that those measurements for you or your children or anyone else will show exposure on lung path. They're down to the levels of licking your iPhone charger. And I'm not trying to be funny, I'm trying to equate radiation exposure to something that you can understand. It's, it's like driving your car at a hundred miles per hour. If you hit something else, you're more likely to die in that wreck. If you're driving at twenty-five miles an hour, you're more likely to survive that wreck. And these are well below any, any measure that would say that it would cause any health concern or health effects in you, your children, or even a fetus, an unborn child. These are just background levels of radiation exposure. I hope that helps you.
Karen? Hi. My name is Karen from the RIS, and I can completely relate with her and her anxiety. Our concern isn't so much for ourselves, it's always for our children, grandchildren, and so, it's, it's a very powerful anxiety that you have. I hear what you're saying. I'm going to take comfort in it, can't say I'm a hundred percent do. I did have a question about, considering the event that happened, there's always the potential for future events to happen. And what about evacuation information? Should something occur again in the future, once things have been running? Should the town have any kind of protection along those lines of evacuation information? Should something went terribly wrong?
Well, thank you for that question. You know, we, in our process and procedures and policies, we actually analyze for those, and if we, we get to those, to certain levels, we actually have an emergency planning program in place for the facility. And with our waste, workspace scenario for the areas where we're in place of waste because of the process that we do, it's mainly contained within the facility or within the sixteen sections of land. We do have plans and procedures where we actually work with the local community, if there was any kind of, where we needed to get some information out. Folks, our current emergency planning does not show any potential of having to reach the, the actual community. It would be within the area community there, where we, we do have a rancher, a couple of them, that we would actually extend, and we do practice and do exercises and drills with them to make sure that we're continuing to communicate with them if we ever have any type of event like that. So, if you know where the WIP facility is, you know, we're, you know, twenty-six miles south, you know, east of here, out there towards for the mining industry, and so, we also communicate with the mines there and make sure that we're in constant communication when we do exercises and drills, we actually test and plan drills. We, again, talk, work with both cops and Carlsbad communities and all of the communities there. Did that answer your question? Okay. Other questions, comments?
Thank you again for being here. We, as a community, greatly appreciate you being here and bringing other folks from around the complex in to help. I, I don't need to repeat this probably to you, but I will. We have been a partner in this project, and I appreciate what Secretary Flynn had to say, since it's very inspirational. And if it weren't for Carlsbad, this project, I can tell you, would not be here, period, end of story. It was the battles we fought, day after day, week after week, hearings we went to, one after another, that resulted in this project, the stars finally lining up, if you will, that it finally happened. And I don't have to tell, tell, Dave Isinga, we, we are your number one ambassador, not only in the state, but at, with Congress, with other folks around the country, that the, the effort this community puts into moving this project forward, other waste streams, transeratic waste streams, other efforts that we put forth, makes the difference in whether or not those things happen. And I think you have to agree with that. And it's, the partnership we've had with DOE through the years has been absolutely extraordinary, very open and transparent, and I, I think that there's a general feeling that that is not the case today. I think that we feel, maybe as a community, as do many of the employees, that they don't know what's going on and they're being kept in the dark, and this is all being orchestrated from Washington. And our folks are, are more or less muted in their ability to say what they need to say to the community. And I'm just being very open and frank with you, because I think it's important that you hear what the feelings are in the community. And we think that we are, should be the number one partner and know everything that's going on from A to Z about what the recovery plan's going to look like. If you can report to the Secretary of the Environment on a daily basis and to whomever else, I don't understand why you're not reporting the community the same way. We deserve it. We are your partner. And I was, I was surprised, that Mr. Claus was surprised, that the employees were worried about whether we'd be going forward with opening of the site and, and what that would look like. And I, I'm surprised that you were surprised by that, because nobody knows, nobody knows what the plans look like, nobody knows what the agenda looks like. We just hear a lot of, you know, surmises about what might happen and what might not happen. I, you know, I don't want to be counterproductive here, but I think we really need to do, is we, at, at the weekly town hall meetings that have been recommended, it seems to me that we need to have a real agenda for those meetings. I mean, notwithstanding, it's been, what, twenty, twenty-three days since the fire, I don't think anybody knows anything. At our Monday, at our Monday town hall meeting, where there were probably two hundred and fifty people there, Monday before last, one of the pertinent questions that was asked about the fire, when was the last maintenance done on that vehicle? And he understood that the fire suppression equipment didn't work. There was no answer. I mean, we had an answer for the, the last maintenance, but fine, how long does it take to figure out if some of those things don't work? So, I think there's genuine concern about the rapidity of which things are happening. And I don't want to imply that we should do anything that's unsafe, but the, the, the response in terms of what's happening is, is, in my opinion, pretty deficient. And I think that we ought to have a real agenda. I even think about things like the fire analysis and what's going on, the, the real rad waste status, what, when, when are you going to go in, what's, what are all those kind of plans? I don't think anybody knows, and, and I think there ought to be a plan where people do know what's going on. And then, you know, about, you know, how the mitigations are going, you mentioned that, but, but getting back into operations again. I mean, there are some of us that have committed a lot of our life to promoting this project, and we feel very, very close to it. A lot of us in this room, and many people that aren't in this room, have dedicated a lot of themselves to advancing this project. I mean, what, what happens to the permanent modifications that we're, we're talking about? Are they on hold? What happens to other, some, some of the other promotions that we're working on in terms of other expansion of, of waste streams? Those are all important considerations. And don't get me wrong, we know that we're, we feel like we're part of the, of the United States, the worldwide nuclear industry. And we know, we know as much as anybody knows, that one error affects everybody in the nuclear family. One error affects everyone. And so, we can't be too safe, and we can't be too careful. And we've been pleading, as an example, for maintenance money for years and, and can't get it. And, I mean, those are some of the things that, that, you know, probably are at the very foundation of some of the things that we're going to find. But at any rate, I, I would hope that we could work with, with Joe Franco and, and work out an agenda where when people come to the meeting, they really get briefed on what's really happening and what the plans really are, timeframes, and, and so that there's some understanding by the community and those that, you know, what, what we're putting on hold, what we're not doing. I think that those are all important issues. So, forgive me for going on so long, but I'm feeling pretty passionate about what and its future. Thank you.
John, I appreciate your comments and I'll pass the mic to my colleagues here and that. But I'm disappointed and I apologize for, for where you guys and maybe the mayors and other officials feel we are. We, we are, it's not our intention to hide anything from you. We know you guys have been the backbone of support for this facility for, for decades, and we appreciate everything you've done. We, we are not trying to back away from sharing information, we're trying to be cautious and get the right information out. And I'm not going to defend the fact that maybe we haven't done as good a job as we should have, but we're going to try and get, try to get better. We're going to try to update our, you know, committed to update the website every day and, and have town hall meetings that are informative. Some of this information just, it doesn't exist, and we're trying to compile it and try to organize it in a way that makes sense to us, and that will ultimately make sense to you. But if you guys feel that unhappy with us, it kind of hurts. So, we're going to have to do what we're working with Joe with, complete confidence in, in Joe, and if you have a sense that, you know, we're telling Joe not to talk to you, that, that's, that's just not happening. We're working with Joe on a, a daily basis to try to understand what to do to get back in business here. We're completely supportive of he and his team, brought in other resources from around the complex, so we, obviously, we've got some work to do with the community here to have you, go back to test again, but we, we need to get back to this. But we, we need to get back there because we, we still need WIP and we need you.
Let me just, you know, first of all, let me, let me say that we will carry, I will carry and, and Dave and I will carry your message directly to Secretary Moniz and, and also your invitation. And I can't make promises on exactly when he'll be able to accept it. But we have actually talked with him about when, when he might be able to come down and with some competing, you know, with, with other sorts of challenges going on. I think one of the things we said is, when we talked about it, is that I think we need to, to get to the point where, where I, where, and this is frankly, sort of my appraisal is we spent the last period of time since, since the incident, really focused on what was the exposure to workers and what was the potential exposure to the community. And I think those have been the priorities for the people out here and they've been the priorities in Washington. I very much hope that we've actually kind of turned the corner on that. And that hopefully with the results we're getting from the worker, you know, with regard to worker exposures and with the results we're getting from, you know, and, and confirming it with EPA, with, you know, with the other independent tests, that, that we can, that we can move past really what's been the first stage of this, which is focusing on what I hope everybody believes is the top priority, which is making sure that the community and, and the community is safe and that the workers who are involved are fully safe. The next, the next plan and the next charge, and we spent a lot of time today beginning to talk about it, is how, you know, what's the recovery plan, what's the timetable and how, how much, you know, how much do we, do we go forward? And I will tell you that some of the lack of specificity is frankly, you know, and this is a real hard thing to say in front of a hundred people, you know, we're just not sure. And, you know, we know what the next step is. And I, I think Joe laid out the next step is they're going to send a monitor down two shafts and they're going to find out what, and these are actually shafts where we don't expect to find contamination. These are places where if you follow the, you know, ventilation stream, we don't think that these are spots, you know, areas that were contaminated. But if they weren't, then that means that we can establish a base inside the mine where we can then proceed to actually go out and actually see what it is. And everybody's very cautious because what if for some reason they don't turn out exactly where they are? And we say, hey folks, you know, we're going to do that and the next week we're going to have somebody down the mine and wait a minute, there's a little bit of a hitch. And then, you know, and then you've got to comply with mine safety. Mine safety requires that you monitor, that you look at, you know, make sure there's two safe paths of egress, that you check the voice, et cetera. What if for some reason you find something that's not quite there and you said, hey, we're going to send someone down right after that? There is a strong commitment to, you know, we can tell you what's going to happen next. It's probably going to happen, oh, it's going to happen over the weekend. You know, if that's right, the next step hopefully will happen early next week. And then, and it'll progress, but until someone or some robot or robotic thing gets in there and takes a look at what happened, we're really not going to have a good, you know, we have some theories. I think you've been speculating, you've been guessing. Everybody here at this table's been guessing, you know, everybody in the WIP facility and et cetera, we've been guessing. Until we know, you know, it's very hard to put together what is the recovery plan. And I, I do think we've tried to do the best we can in terms of sharing a few, the efforts. I, I think Bruce that, you know, essentially says, look, we're trying to put together a plan that, that, you know, that we're, as soon as we have the full plan and we can tell you, and it would be, think it's going to be very soon, that, that we'll be able to tell all the workers. We now know you've been, got a commitment through, you know, extra time. We're, we're working as hard as we can to give a firm commitment as soon as we can and we expect that it can be very soon. But we've got, you know, and we're working together on that and I think that's important. So we're working together with Bruce and, and Joe, we're working as hard as we can on it. So we're, we're trying to be as forthcoming as we, as we can in the, in the context of the situation where there's, at every stage of it, there's a little bit of what we don't know. And so we'll try and tell you what we can. I, I think there's no, you know, the secretary today, when we were talking, you know, basically said, look, you know, you got to get that website going, get everything you know up on that website. Make sure that you're directly, you know, that you communicate as directly as you can with all of those folks. And, and that's sort of what we're going to do. I will say, we understand and appreciate the extent to which this community has been cast to the key to this facility. This community has been key to this facility and there's no community like it anywhere in this country and there may not be anywhere in the world that sees and understands the way in which this, this type of facility can work. We appreciate that and we face a common challenge, we face a challenge that we're going to have to meet together because what you said is probably right. One error affects everyone. And we've now got a situation where we have to basically take the error that happened, or not the error, it may not have been, whatever happened, it may not be the cause of error maybe. It may turn out to be an unlawful, whatever happened, it may be an unlawful. But we now have got to basically take the lessons that we learned from that and we've got to reinforce that. And we now, to the extent that we want to expand the waste streams that go into WIP, we need to address those concerns. We need to address those concerns to be able to continue the mission. And so I think, I, you know, I appreciate the community support that's been to this facility and frankly, I ask for it because that's something that we do at the DOE at the national level and your support is absolutely critical. And we hope that it'll continue with the, whatever discommunication you had and those that discuss it in any way. But, but thank you, that we, that's all we can say is thank you very much and we hear your, we'll hear your message.
This gentleman's been patiently waiting.
Steve Summer. And my question is, kind of follow along with John Eaton on the transparency of information. CEMER has published actual numbers from their Station A, Station B monitors and their near field sample lifers. They have all their annual reports on their website. You can see all of the data that was pre-event. We can see the data that is post-event. When will we be able to see similar data from the WIP facility? You've talked about how things have fallen off. You've talked about having seven monitors that are spaced around. We can't as a public know how that may be compared, you say it compares to a group one, but we have nothing to go on. So when can we expect to see that data on your website? Thank you.
Thank you for that. We actually have the data there now. If you pull up the website, it's on it. And it correlates to the outside of the facility, all those samples that are there. And then we're going to continue to track the other samples that Dr. Hardy has done. We're also doing some of the other ones that, you know, I talked about soils, water and vegetation. Those are also will be some of the ones that you'll start seeing some postings there and we'll start putting them out there. We're also working on that website. It'll be under construction and we're going to be adding a lot more links. We want to tie a link directly to Dr. Hardy's area so that you can toggle back and forth between the two if you want to do some sort of their org agreement, share some of their information on the same page. We are discussing that now and trying to make that so it's easier for you to be able to extract that information. Right now, we do have some of this information now at the WIP page, so we will, we'll be showing that. We, we can provide that to you after the meeting and make sure that you can look at it.
We've got time for one more question. I want to pass on some information though before we wrap up. Number one is we have some senior managers in the audience tonight who are willing to stay and, and talk with you one-on-one. Could you raise your hand? Stand up. Well, pretend at least one, so you'll be a popular guy. The other thing I want to do is remind you that there is another town hall meeting tomorrow. Congressman Pierce is sponsoring and it will be at four o'clock. And it is at the Leo Suite Center, 1302 Mission Avenue, at four o'clock tomorrow afternoon. And hopefully we'll have some more information that we can update you on at that time. So we'll take one last question.
First, I'd like to say thank you gentlemen for coming. It really shows that you really care about our community and stuff. My name's Terry McDonald and I am part of the WIP family that Joe and Bruce has talked about. I've been associated with WIP for over 20 years. I've got 37 years of experience in the nuclear field of science. And I've got friends here in this town and they're asking me, first they're concerned about me and the workers out there and stuff. And they're, they're, they had the wondering of some of us do is, well, you know, why it has taken so long for us to get into the underground, see what's going on? And they wonder, it appears to them that there was no contingency plan for, for an event like this. And from my experience in nuclear field, most nuclear facilities do have some type of contingency plan so that you can go in as soon as possible, you bring in your resources and you address it because when you have a nuclear incident like this, time is of the most essence to determine what the cause is and what the release amount is. And so I'm hoping we have to go forward, we do a lessons learned from this so that heaven forbid if this were to happen again, we can act as quickly as possible to find out what the source is and what the release is. And, and also in this way it will help, you know, maybe comfort the people in Carl'sbad with what's going on. So I guess this is more like a advice than it is a question. So again, thank you gentlemen.
Thank you very much. I would like to answer that. There is kind of a question in that and that is, you know, do we have contingency plans? So then we're ready for that. We do have procedures and processes and we have a contingency plan that shows up. We have actually, before WIP opened, we actually did some testing on different material for being able to throw decon some salt. We've done, you know, I've been blessed to have been part of that process early in life when I was working out there. And so we do have that in place. One of the things that is important to realize for us right now is that we had another event before and that was the fire in the underground. The fire in the underground changed the configuration of the mine from a safety aspect because we use a lot of the normal safety equipment that we would normally have in place. So, you know, you, you talk about the rebreathers and all those things that we normally have in caches and things like that. And so we also understood that there were some items that were a concern to some folks after we did a critique of the fire and they said, hey, we didn't think some of the phones may have worked or our items like that. So we wanted to verify all of that. So what's taken a long time is we need to make sure from an industrial and biological before we send any of the folks down. We understand the urgency. It is, like, you know, on a normal facility, even in a nuclear plant, you don't have the same configuration as a mine. And we have to take that into a lot of consideration and we're working with all our experts in that, which is the WIP workforce. And we've got to continue to use them. They know the mine, they know how it works, they, they understand it and we will continue to do that. So we do have those bands who will learn from this though. You know, there's always lessons learned and from those lessons learned, we'll be the better facility.
I want to thank you all for coming out tonight. Thank you for your time and we will be back in touch. If you can make it over to the town meeting tomorrow afternoon, please do so. Thank you very much.